In this open meeting, we've got a rather light agenda. We're gonna have the Madam Clerk take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Balbino?
Present.
Councilmember Giroux?
Here.
Councilmember First Doc?
Here.
Mayor Proton Pimentel?
Here.
Mayor Boyle.
Here, excuse me, thank you. Alright, we've got the invocation that's gonna be led by Pastor Rob McKenna of the Bridge Church. Following that, we'll have the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Giroux. If you could all please rise.
Good evening, everyone. Always a pleasure to come and open us in prayer. Lord, we thank you for tonight and ask, as I always do, Lord God, that you would just continue to bless this city, Lord God, in so many ways, and we give thanks for it. Lord, I thank you for our leadership. In fact, you tell us through your word to pray for our leaders, to pray for our politicians, Lord, and so we do that tonight. I pray that you would give them wisdom and discernment. I pray that you would give them forward thinking, and Lord, that you would help them see clearly those things that are ahead of us. And Lord, I pray for our city and our safety. I pray for our first responders, our police department, our fire department, that you would watch over them and bless them and take care of them as well, keep them safe in all that they do. And Lord, thank you for this city in regards to our schools, our teachers, administrators, Lord, the families of this community, Lord God, thank you for all of them. And Lord, we give you just praise and thanks for this wonderful community we call El Segundo. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Yeah, I heard that too, and I was like, "God? Something going on here?" Alright, thank you very much, Pastor McKenna. Great seeing you. Thank you, Councilmember Giroux. We've got a commendation that's gonna be read by Mayor Proton Pimentel. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a commendation from the city of El Segundo. Whereas bullying is the aggressive use of power targeting another person or group of people with repeated unwanted words or actions hurting them emotionally or physically, and whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, on playgrounds, in schools, and online through technology, and whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence, affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually. And whereas thousands of children and adolescents are affected by bullying annually in our community, and whereas targets of bullying are at an increased risk for depression, anxiety, sleep difficulty, lower academic achievement, and dropping out of school, and students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as going to school, riding the bus, interacting online, and attending community activities. Whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors. And whereas children who witness bullying often feel less safe, helpless to stop it, and intimidated. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo, California hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as National Bullying Prevention Month, and encourage schools, students, parents, recreation programs, and religious institutions, businesses, and community organizations to be encouraged to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer for all children and adolescents. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Who will receive this? Is Councilmember, or excuse me, is DEI committee member Louis Hill here, please? Louis?
Steven Guidon.
There we go. Very nice to meet you, Steven. If Louis Hill is not here, we will take this on his behalf?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, Louis Hill from our diversity, equity, and inclusion committee was scheduled to be here. Unfortunately, with the conflict, he's not here tonight, but I can accept on his behalf, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. Thank you, Mayor Proton. Alright, it sounds like we got rid of the echo. That's great, thank you. Alright, Public Communications, now is the time and place for anyone that would like to make public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any comment cards?
We do, sir. Steven Guidon?
Thank you for your time. I'm Steven Guidon. I'm a general dentist here in El Segundo for the last 11 years. Previous to that, I was practicing in Manhattan Beach for 30 years until we had a fire in the building, so I moved here. I'm 79 years old. I really like the city of El Segundo. It's been very good to me, and I feel like I've been good to it. I employ eight people in my dental practice. I've been a dentist for 66 years. I am not a litigious person at all. I've been on the faculty at the dental school at USC and at UCLA and at Indiana, University School of Dentistry. I was a reserve police officer in Manhattan Beach for some 10 years. I've had 10 surgeries on my hands and my wrists to keep practicing dentistry. Friday, August 25th, I was attacked at 4:00 PM by a 90-100-pound Rhodesian Ridgeback named Logan. My hand is still healing. I'm having some trouble manipulating my ring finger on my left hand. It's been really painful, and it continues to be a problem to me, the way it's healing. There were four kids walking this dog, a young lady and three boys, when the dog just jumped me and bit me. I called the police department, and they responded. They took videos and they took a report, and also the fire department was dispersed and gave me first aid treatment. The dog, I found out, has bit two other people. One, Mr. Ivan Wilkins. This dog is a menace to the city, and I have no idea what has been done with it. But it needs to be removed from the public streets, and I just feel, I don't like to complain, but I feel like I've been a victim here. I take responsibility for what I do and what happens to me. But I was clearly a victim here. I tried to get ahold of someone to help me in animal control, and the second part of my being here, not only to report this dog that's a menace to the city, I'm glad that I wasn't knocked off my feet. I'm glad I wasn't a little kid. I think the dog probably would have gone for my throat. That's all conjecture, but I'm glad that I was able to keep my balance. I've handed out to everybody, to the council members, a report, the police report, and you should all have one. So that's that about the dog, and I wish that, I hope that someone would take action and put it on a farm out in Utah where they have some areas for malicious dogs, so he would not be a menace and really hurt someone, okay? Worse than me. The second part of my appearing here is that I could not get any help on the weekend. I'm pretty certain that most animal control departments of the cities work seven days a week, and El Segundo only works five days a week, and I was, I had a hard time getting someone to help me until mid-morning on Monday. And so I think maybe councils should look at that, about maybe having animal control more available, maybe seven days a week, like maybe the other communities in our neighborhood. Officer Scott Black took my report, everyone, they took video of my wounds, and I have a police report that I've given all of you, and other than probably needing another surgery on my hand or on my arm, I think that's, I think I've made myself clear of why I'm here and what I have to say. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Guidon. Madam Clerk?
And I do have those reports for you.
Okay.
Dr. Watkins?
Mayor and council, my name is Bill Watkins, side of 327 East Oak Avenue. And I come here positively. I really want to thank you for putting that stop sign in at Oak and Main. It has certainly made my life and my wife's life a lot easier. There was, for a long time, we couldn't even turn, we barely couldn't turn left if we were going towards the city off of Oak on the main, because people would, as I think was mentioned when you were talking about it last week, if you make the light at Mariposa and you made the light in front of the high school, I could pretty much guarantee you were certainly going faster than 25 miles an hour and probably more like 40 to 45. And certainly, we've all seen cars fly down Main Street. That seems to have come to a stop. We're able to turn left on the main, people going, coming on the west side of town and going to turn left to go north, same thing. It's easy to do now. It's not only makes a lot safer for anybody walking across the street, certainly the children during school hours, but people walking their dogs, they can walk them now easily across the street at Oak and Main. So I wanted to thank you. My wife also thanks you. She put a big thank you in her Facebook page and already has 50 agreements or smiling faces or whatever people put on. But thank you for what you did. It certainly made our life a lot easier, and I think anybody living on Oak Street, it's made their lives a lot easier also. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Dr. Watkins. Yeah, and you know what? If you want to stick around for a few minutes?
Me?
Yes, sir, Dr. Guidon, because the city manager will do a wrap-up of public comments to acknowledge your public comment. Probably take a few minutes, if you don't mind sticking around. Thank you. Okay, who's next, Madam Clerk?
Sorry, Maya. Sorry. Ron Swanson?
Mr. Swanson.
And also, not to interrupt Mr. Swanson, but Mr. Hoes here.
Louis, thanks for showing up. We'll get you back up here after public comments, okay?
Evening, council. Been quite some time since I've been here. Ron Swanson, 629 California Street. First, had a great day a couple of weeks ago, South Bay Police and Fire Memorial Foundation Golf Tournament, and we got one of the old chiefs come down out of Idaho to join us that day, and it was Tim Grimmon, and Jaime joined us and Hugo, and it was just a marvelous, marvelous day. Tim was one of the original board members of South Bay Police and Fire. But I'm here tonight to speak on a huge problem that's brewing in this town, and that's bike safety. The electric bikes in this town have been taken over. They've been taken over from adults to somebody who is seven or eight years old, and it's getting worse by the day. This morning, when I had to go back from my house back over to California Street, I went down center. I turned that way. I don't know why I did. And it was like maybe 10 to 8, and I could see these little middle schoolers on these, the scooters that are, not the pedal scooters, but the regular bikes that are about that big, and they're low, and they're in the street, and they're going along the corridors that are parked southbound on Center. This, I can't tell you how many times I've watched adults going down California Street towards the back gate of Center Street School with several kids on the back of their electric bikes. Maybe they have helmets, maybe they don't. Nobody in this town stops at stop signs when they're on a bike. I mean, nobody, especially kids. Some of these, a week ago or so, I was backing into my driveway, and I'm very careful about it. There was a car up at California and the back entrance of the school at the stop sign. Nobody coming the other way, so I pulled out, backed in. A young man on an electric bike came flying down the hill. He must have been going, because you're downhill, he must have been going 35, 40, in that range. He came towards me. I stopped, and he went behind me, two, three feet to the driveway. I'd said something to him. I said, "Why don't you stop?" The car that was trailing him, I swear to God, I could think that the man pulled up and said, "Why are you yelling at my kid?" And the kid went by my car as I'm backing up. But that's happening all over town, and what I'm afraid of is a tragedy's gonna happen, and then something will be done about it. I would like to see maybe the city and the school district form a task force committee. Several people from PD, from the school district, all volunteer for it and come up with a plan, especially for the areas around the schools, because they're just all over the place. They come down, they go westbound on Grand Avenue, past my building, where everybody's lined up to go, and they're either between the curb and the car, or they're outside in the other lane, where people are still trying to get into the lane to turn right on the Center Street. And it's gonna happen. It's just a matter of time. So I don't know how we can do this, but enforcement might help, but it's gotta start with the parents, talk to the kids, and I will tell you that if somebody injures, a young man injures somebody on their bike, and that parent bought that child that bike, the person injured will probably own the person's house, because that's what's gonna happen. They're gonna get sued, and I'm afraid of that, too. We can avoid this and do the right thing and try to teach these kids how to operate bikes in a safe manner. And it's just, again, a matter of time that this is gonna happen. We had a tragedy sometime back with a skateboard, and it kinda, that woke up everybody, and guess what? The skate park came around. We need to do the same thing here and help the community, educate the adults to educate their kids. I don't know if anybody, some of you are old enough to remember Honda 50. Remember that? It was the original moped, but it had pedals, and a Honda 90? Well, you had to have a license to drive those. You had to be a licensed driver. These are the equal two or better. I mean, they're fast, and they're heavy, and I don't know what we can do about it, but I'm gonna ask the city to look into it. I'm available. I'll be glad to help because as of 5/1 next year, I'm gonna be, have a lot more time on my hands. I'm gonna retire. So, but I love living here, and I want everybody that lives here to continue living. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Any others? Okay, so we heard about the terrible dog incident, the stop sign, thank you for that, and the bike safety. Mr. George, would you like to comment on the first and third?
Yes, regarding the animal control situation, and very sorry to hear that, what happened. We do handle animal control in our police department, and we do have service officers on the weekend, but primarily animal control is dedicated during the weekdays. So I would like to get your information, if I can, and follow up with you on, I'm just getting more information of that, and I'll follow up with our police department, particularly on the weekends. I appreciate that comment.
So I have a comment on that. So just not long ago, I had a situation where I called animal control on weekend, and I ran into this very similar situation, but I was persistent, and they sent out an officer to take care of the problem. So maybe we just make sure that there is somebody that can substitute in or have like a cross-training, but we do really need to ensure that there's...
Good point. Thank you.
And they did handle, the police department handled it very well.
My concern was that after...
Sir, if you want to clarify, you're gonna have to come up to the mic, please.
Anyway, I just wanted to let you know the police department did handle it.
My concern was that after this dog bit me, that there was really no one to really see that the dog was quarantined, that it had its shots. You know, I'm thinking, "I wonder if the dog's had his rabies shots," you know? Pertinent information like that, I, you know, so I'm sweating bullets for, you know, 72 hours to find out, okay?
Yeah, maybe, I think she has a great point. Maybe there's an opportunity to, what's it? Well, I was thinking of mutual aid with other cities that have animal...
Yeah, our dogs go to Hawthorne. Will we pick them up? This would be something the chief might comment on about our ability to address that. There must be a decision tree that officers would go through on the weekend, but that would be worth revisiting, City Manager.
Absolutely. The final speaker regarding the electric bikes, we currently have internally the task force. I think that we can address this certainly on our public safety task force agenda in terms of taking the whole monitoring of electric vehicles to the next level. We can discuss it in our public safety task force as well as we do have a joint subcommittee in conjunction with the school district. As you know, we meet the first Wednesday of every month, where we can agendize that item for discussion between the both parties. So I think that'll be something that we'll follow up on also.
Can I suggest on that, I would check in with Gansalves in Sacramento. I believe there's a number of bills gestating about, much like the mopeds of our, the royal we youth, that I think there's a number of minimum age and licensing bills that are being mooted in Sacramento. And I think there's also a county ordinance that's being flirted with about, based on the different size, whether or not they are a pedal bike, if the pedal capabilities go up to 25 miles an hour or 12 and a half miles an hour. I mean, there's all kinds of different ones out there that would be worth, if we're gonna pursue something, trying to align around what we think the likely winner is on those.
We also got the Local Travel Network that we're celebrating the kickoff for in November. It's also incumbent upon us to publicize to the drivers that this is a slow-speed town of 35 miles an hour or less, pretty much everywhere except PCH, which is why with the Local Travel Network, which we've been working on for three or four years with South Bay City Council Governments, we don't even have a designated route because the whole city is slow speed. So the bikes aren't going away, even with, I think it's great. I mean, if it's not too overly cumbersome, who knows what this legislation is, but bikes aren't going away, multi-mobility is not going away, e-bikes, scooters, golf carts, we just have to get everyone used to it. So I think it's the e-bike riders, the kids, the adults, their parents, it's our police department holding them accountable and ticketing them, and it's also getting the word out to everybody that we need to pay attention, because we've got a lot of cyclists in town who also want to share the road, and they want drivers to slow down and obviously not hit them. So, yeah, Mrs. Voss.
So we have done some public outreach around e-bike safety with the police department. I think it was Lieutenant Corkins who did an e-bike safety video, so we can resurface that video and promote it a little bit more. Also, there is a local travel network that will hopefully address this issue, which is launching on November 1st, I think.
I get that. I think we can make all the videos in the world, in the end, they're not gonna listen to them. 13 is 13. 13 is 13. So one of the things, I was gonna do this in my wrap-up, but it's pertinent to now, is the COG meeting actually addressed one of these. And there is a lot of bills going through about, or being vetted out, and one of them is to require a license if you're 12 years old or older to operate an e-bike. That's some of the things that's being vetted out. So I understand what you're saying, where it's just a lot of things kind of being moved around to figure out what the best way forward is, and I do believe this is going to be addressed fairly quickly in this legislative session.
I mean, it was just a fatality, right, in Burbank, a child on a bike. I mean, it's out there.
Yeah, Mr. Swanson, if you can make it quick, please. Thank you.
Lance, I agree with you. You can do print, you can video. If the parents don't do it, the kids aren't gonna do it. What we needed to do first is patrol around the schools, especially Center Street and the middle school, not Center Street, but the middle school and the high school, mostly the middle school, though. That's the problem child right now. That's where the problem's gonna happen, if it happens. You know, I was gonna today maybe a couple of community meetings, but again, you can lead the horse to water, but you can't make a drink. But enforcement? But enforcement and some summons. They see these kids doing this stuff, they gotta be stopped, and they gotta give, give them a summons and let them, let them drag. See how long that child will have that bike if the parent brings him down, has to bring him into PD to get a little lecture on it. I know-
First offense in Manhattan Beach is a five-hundred-dollar fine.
Yeah.
How about that?
But if, if I had to get, if I had to drag, drag my dad someplace back when I knew about it, and I learned from it. So, we've gotta enforce it around there, write some tickets, I mean, Grand and Center is huge. They come down that hill, and nobody stops, nobody. The adults, even on the road race bikes, they don't stop, because they don't wanna lose their, their momentum coming down the hill. So, that's all I can say. Thanks, thanks for hearing me.
Thank you. All right, what, now we're gonna go back to the commendation. Mayor Protem Pimental's gonna read it all over again, just kidding. You missed that part, Mr. Hill. Would you please accept the anti-bullying month commendation on the behalf of diversity, equity, inclusion? Thank you. You wanna say a few words real quick, right here at the, yes, thank you?
This is a incredible month, it's a good month, um, to, to remember this, all the things that have happened within the high school in terms of bullying. Uh, this kind of is a homage to that, and, um, I think as far as, as I represent DEI, you know, we need to think, we need to think of other people, and other people besides kids get bullied as well. So, we just need to keep an open mind to who is a victim in this, uh, in this topic, and it's not just kids. So, that's, all right?
Thank you very much, we'll do a quick photo. Yep, thank you.
First time, never done this, so.
Center, they'll, they'll gather around you. All right, ready? And then, do you wanna open it? It's okay. Yeah, that's exactly what it is. All right, perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
The apple didn't fall flat.
I think Manhattan Beach is the top of the order. For you guys. Yeah, I checked with Manhattan Beach.
It's interesting. There's so many different kinds and like, outlast-
I think we're gonna have to do that, so.
Yeah, I think we'll, but it would be interesting to see the dog shot at the legislation, because the license would be great.
All right, um, may I have a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Manag, uh, city manager, Mr. George, anything on Hyperion, please?
Uh, yes, mayor, but as you can tell, my voice is not in good form tonight, so I'm gonna have, uh, our communications, uh, manager, Diane Chabon, give that update tonight.
Thank you. Hello, mayor and city council, I'd like to provide you with an update on the ongoing situation with Hyperion, a City of Los Angeles facility. Uh, legislation for bill AB twelve sixteen is still on Governor Newsom's desk for consideration to be signed into law, so we're keeping our fingers crossed and keeping our eyes on that. AQMD received approximately forty odor complaints in the past two weeks, but no confirmation of any nuisance violation. Uh, there were no reports of breakdowns, upsets, or fence line monitoring exceedances in the past two weeks, according to AQMD. Uh, Hyperion reports that on September thirtieth, they completed the refurbishment of their primary odor scrubbers, which treats foul air pulled off of the primary settling tanks. Uh, this refurbishment should help to reduce odors from the plant. Excuse me. Also, Hyperion has reported that they have two remaining AQMD requirements to fill out of an initial sixty that have been given to them, uh, and that is the installation of the new primary tank covers. They are currently in the process of replacing the tank covers for battery C and B, and that's expected to continue through December twenty-twenty-three. And then the next battery is scheduled to be replaced and completed by June twenty-twenty-four. At that time, uh, all of AQMD's current requirements will have been met by Hyperion, and the expectation is that the odor issues will have been addressed to the best of their abilities at that time. That's based on today, there may be future requirements that AQMD issues, but that's the point of view from today. Um, Hyperion has invited the city to participate in an emergency response tabletop drill taking place in November. Uh, the purpose of this drill is to test Hyperion's emergency response protocols and identify areas for improvement. So, um, all of the stakeholders will be participating in this. I understand Hyperion held their internal tabletop drill, and this is gonna invite all of the stakeholders that would be involved in case of some sort of emergency at the plant. Um, also, just this afternoon, the city manager had a Zoom meeting with Ryan Jackson, who is a representative of Mayor Bass's office, and Tracy Minamide, who is the COO for Hyperion. Um, and Trace will be our point of contact for Hyperion moving forward. And that's all I have for the update. Happy to answer any questions, along with city manager.
I'm just really happy to hear that we're happy, because we just had this conversation on Monday that we hadn't heard, so I'm pleased to hear that there's something that's been scheduled. And I did wanna let everyone know that the environmental committee's gonna be doing a tour of the facility at the end of the month.
Yep.
Yeah, and I'll just add that, um, the, the request of Hyperion was we need a senior-level individual that Daryl could call to ask questions and get information immediately. And it took a while for the mayor's office to get back to us, but the individual they've appointed is the chief operating officer who reports directly to Barbara Romero. She has a civil engineering background and has been working in the sanitation department for thirty years. So, she's very knowledgeable, she's in a leadership role, and hopefully that'll help us obtain information quicker, so we can disseminate it faster to the folks in town.
That's great. Do we, we had that request of Ryan at the Mayor Bass's office and others about this visual demonstration of where we're at with all the ad hoc committees dashboard. Do we have that? Is that up on our website? How's that looking?
We are, we are working on that as we speak right now. We, uh, this afternoon, we, we are now receiving, uh, monthly updates on all thirty-three of those items, as well as updates on the abatement orders that came through AQMD. So, right now, we're working to synthesize all of that into a re, easily readable dashboard that we can put on our website. So, that'll be up very soon.
Great. And, and these are the same reports that Tracy is receiving from Hyperion, and where they are on those thirty-three items, where the progress is. And so, our job is gonna take that information, uh, put it in some type of reader-friendly format, and then we will take the laboring work, updating it, and pushing that out to people.
That's great. I mean, Tracy was involved early on, so is she just in the background this whole time, and she's been brought back up and elevated, or do you, Elias?
Uh, I'm, sorry, pretty much, that's the case. She has been involved, I know her, and I have had some contacts with her, not as heavily as I had with others, but, uh, she's very knowledgeable, kind of been quiet, but now, uh, I'm, I'm glad to see that, because she's a civil engineer, and we talk the same language.
And, and that's what Elias asked for, he said, I want someone who understands what's going on on a technical level, that can explain it to us. Uh, and what Ryan Jackson told us on the Zoom today was that her responsibilities are being reorganized, so she will be more primarily responsible for Hyperion, and that's gonna be more of her direct focus going forward, so.
And furthermore, she has a very good working relationship with Dr. Stensrum, uh, who we have hired as an expert, and is working on this dashboard and other, other things. So, that's really win-win situation, frankly.
Thank you, that's great.
May I ask who, who's our delegation gonna be for the tabletop? Is it just gonna be Public Works, or is it?
I believe it's Public Works, uh, Diane will be there in our fire department.
I was gonna say, we should have somebody on the emergency management end of it.
Yeah, our battalion chiefs have been invited, they'll be there.
We can tell them we have our, we have our own radio station, we can use our radio station.
Okay, we're on to consent, any polls this evening?
Yes, I'd like to poll number five, please.
Five, okay. Any others? Okay, do we have a motion to approve items two, three, four, six, and seven?
So moved.
Second?
For six seconds.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that was five-zero, is that five-zero? Anyone to post? Yeah, okay. All right, Carol, item five.
Yeah, so I went to poll number five, do I have to say the title?
Yeah, please.
I'm on the, I get to the back to that.
Renew contract with what?
Renew the contract with Pilliam Corporation to, to police body worn camera and vehicle video system. And the only reason I went to pull this is just to have a conversation, because I really believe in having, uh, the body camera, and I think it really has helped give us, uh, like insight and, you know, and transparency for our public. But one of the things I was curious about, it says all-new body, like, the contract allows all-new body worn camera, all-new upgrade, all-new, everything's all-new. I just wanna make sure we're not throwing away something, like, if, does the equipment all need to be replaced? Is that what the, the money is about, or can we not just phase it in so we can have extended operation of the equipment? That was really my question.
No, the, the, um, the contract is set regardless of whether we get new equipment, so it's not necessarily to purchase all the equipment, it's, it's the contract. As a side benefit of renewing the contract, we're gonna get new hardware and, uh, some improvements with the, with the system.
So, would that be additive cost?
No.
Okay, so it's part of the contract?
It's part of the cost, yes.
I just wanna make sure that we're not just, you know, upgrading because the contract says versus trying to elongate the life cycle of some of this equipment.
No, understood. No, the, the contract, we're, we're not paying anything extra for updating the hardware or the software, as part of the system.
And I noticed it's in the cloud, and the, the storage space is sufficient to house some of this information?
Yes, yes.
And then, does this connect to our drone equipment as well? Like, is there a, is there a part, is there, is there a connectivity, or does there need to be any type of connectivity? Is it all just separate?
Uh, the drone would be separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments for the chief? Or would you like to move approval?
No, I'm approving.
Okay. First took with the first, do we have a second?
Baldino, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero, great. We're on to item eight, twenty-twenty-three, annual update to the city's twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six strategic plan. Mrs. Voss to present. All right.
All right, good eve, good evening, mayor, members of council. I'm here to present the twenty-twenty-three update to our four-year strategic plan, um, covering the years twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six. Um, each year, we go through an update process, and as you know, um, city council and the executive team hold a strategic planning session. This year, we had that session back in May. Um, that session followed a series of interviews with a consultant, our strategic planning consultant, Henry Garcia, and he solicited feedback from the city council, from all the executive team, uh, to take a look at our, our current strategic plan, and see if there were needs that the community had brought up, or things that have changed, um, things that have become, um, important that weren't maybe important the year before, that we needed to take a closer look at. Uh, and through that process, uh, we came up with our, um, our same five goals, uh, resulted in thirty-six strategies, and then council, um, through a, a voting process, determined its top ten priorities. And in addition to that, we closed out nineteen strategies, um, from the previous year. So, just to recap, here's our, our house, our strategy house. Um, it starts with our vision, be a global innovation leader where big ideas take off, while maintaining our unique small-town character. Um, obviously, the vision is our aspirational goal for the city. Our mission is to provide a great place to live, work, and visit. And then each pillar of the house there to hold the house up are our five goals. Goal number one, uh, enhance customer service, diversity, equity, inclusion, and communications. Uh, goal two, support community safety and preparedness. Goal three, promote a quality workforce through teamwork and organizational efficiencies. Four, develop and maintain quality infrastructure, technology, and five, champion economic development and fiscal sustainability. And then, the next layer down are our strategies, and how do we accomplish these five goals? Um, as I mentioned, we have thirty-six strategies. Um, those are the more specific actions that, um, the city staff will take to accomplish, uh, the overall goals. Uh, within those strategies, each strategy has an action plan, um, a series of, of projects, activities that will help support that strategy, and ultimately, the goals. Um, then, we have the values of the organization, service, ethics, and collaboration, those have not changed. And then, at the foundation of our house, obviously, are our people, the community, our staff, um, are the basis for what we're trying to do here with community service and public service. So, I wanted to start, as I mentioned, we closed out nineteen goals. Um, so I wanted to mention some of our, our accomplishments. Um, they're roughly ordered in the order of the goals. So, goal one, um, communications, so our, our strategy was enhance communications, the communications program, um, and update the communications plan in our next presentation, um, you'll get a better sense of that. Um, we have Diane Chabon here, our communications manager, who's now just completed her first year, um, who is working towards that goal. Um, so, we've, we've, we've completed that particular strategy, and we continue to work on it. Uh, we've addressed Hyperion concerns, as you heard from the update. Um, implemented community development online permitting, which is a customer service goal. We did our sixth annual net promoter survey, we got the scores of forty-nine and fifty-five, which are in the great category for a net promoter. Um, but the most important thing about the net promoter survey is that we take that feedback, um, and I'll talk later about how we bring that feedback into our strategic planning process. Obviously, that's what our businesses and residents are telling us that they need from the city, so we take that, uh, to heart. We hired ten police officers, we established a public safety task force, finalized the second phase of the fire accreditation, established the Intranet, um, as a one-stop site for employee information. Um, we're now using the Intranet more frequently, we've created it as when you open our, um, Google or any search engine on our, our site, um, on our computers here at work, um, that's the first thing you see. So, we have a image, top news stories, additional information forms, um, all the things that you could need, uh, as an employee here. Uh, we provided, the human resources department led this initiative to provide enhanced training, development, engagement opportunities for employees, we now have a town hall program. Uh, there's been a series of different trainings that, um, have been hosted by, uh, the city for employees. Um, we completed the remodel of the Development Services Business Service Center, the concierge service, or the one-stop-shop concept over at, uh, Development Services. Um, Public Works are going into infrastructure now, um, also gonna do boulevard improvements, they've completed west of PCH. Now, we're going east, uh, to complete that this year. Refurbished the teen center, as you know, paint furnishings, upgraded the, the teen center to make it more usable for our, our youth. Uh, we approved Measure BT, we're going into fiscal sustainability, um, Measure BT, our business license tax measure, identified areas within the community, okay, so this is the, um, adopted housing element update, and that was complete. And we won the most business-friendly city in, uh, Los Angeles County, and we earned a triple-A credit rating from Standard and Poor. So, then, um, after looking at those accomplishments, that kind of-
Hey, not too shabby on all those.
Not too shabby. Credit to the city manager for that. Um, so we then, um, as I mentioned, the nineteen accomplishments, that wasn't even all of them, actually. Um, it was just a, a snapshot. Then, we established going forward, now looking ahead, what are our priorities for next year? Um, and then the ones with the little star next to them are new strategies that we added through the strategic planning process. Um, and I won't read all those, but community engagement continues to be a priority, um, quality of life, um, fire department, best, most cost-effective model for the fire department, and that accreditation process that I mentioned, we finished phase two of. Um, KPIs, uh, promote data-driven decision-making by establishing department-specific key performance indicators. That's gonna be a really important one as we move forward through monitoring and tracking of the strategic plan. And then, uh, another new one is the onboarding process for new employees, um, how to get the best and brightest to, um, work here and make their process towards, to coming to work here, uh, more smooth. The plunge, um, long-term financial plan, looking at new revenues, how best to create a sustainable financial model. Um, economic development program is also, continues to be a priority. And then, that small-town charm and single-family neighborhoods is also a priority. And then, um, regional housing, east- And then, um, regional housing east of Pacific Coast Highway, fiscal feasibility study. So three additional new strategies that are not part of the top ten priorities. Um, ascertain a level of feeling safe in the community, implement the local travel network that we talked about related to e-bike safety, um, slowing down traffic, and that's in the process of being completed. Um, and then use the city's existing lobbyists to explore property tax reapportionment. So this is the part that, um, I get a little bit more excited about because, uh, we're, we have some new ideas for this. Uh, so we are, as you know, um, we hired a special projects administrator in the city manager's office. Uh, her name is Zen, and she, um, is a pro- expert project manager. So she's working on a software solution for actually project managing the strategic plan. So, um, what that entails is, you know, from the strategy house that we have, we have our thirty-six strategies and then our action items. Each action item will have, um, a project management task. So we can not, measure progress, monitor how well we've done towards each of the action items, roll it up into a report, real-time. Um, you're curious about anything that might be coming up, um, that we're working on within the strategic plan. We can look at it, it should be updated, we'll have a report, um, ready to go. Um, and then looking at each action item and identifying those actions that are measurable and creating, um, real KPIs for each of those actions. And in addition, um, you know, we have the city manager's update that goes to all of council, uh, on a monthly basis. Um, we're going to change the format of that and we're going to tie it specifically to our strategic plan, our top ten priorities. So each month you'll receive, um, a report from the city manager that gives you a quick update on our progress towards each of the top priorities. And finally, public communication and alignment with survey feedback. So I mentioned earlier, we do our annual net promoters survey. Um, the last thing you want to do with a survey is, you know, just take the information and pocket it and not do anything with it. Um, so we take that feedback from the survey, um, it is part, we report it out to council, it is part of the strategic planning process. Um, and then we looked at, uh, this year, correlation of the survey feedback with our strategic plan goals and strategies. And there's quite a lot of correlation. Um, council is taking action on the things that we're hearing from our net promoter feedback, but we want to do a better job telling that story. So we are going to start now with our newsletter that goes out to over nine thousand people, um, a we heard you section that aligns things that the cities, things that we heard from the net promoter survey, here's what we're doing and here's how it aligns with our strategic plan. So it takes it, um, full circle in terms of community feedback, um, and direct action from the plan. And that is it. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
I got a couple of questions. One, the KPIs are, I heard you talk about, by the way, this is awesome. Mrs. Voss, this has evolved so much since you've been here, so good work. The KPIs, I heard you say tied to an action item, are we also talking about KPIs at the strategy level? For example, one of the new ones we came up this year was that our residents feel safe. And we, we emphasize feel because despite what the crime stats are telling us, there's a certain sense of how are our residents actually feeling? Because it's a very important thing is they make decisions on where they want to live, how they choose to live their life in terms of how they're, are they feeling safe? So I throw it out there to suggest that, you know, we, I don't know if that's an MPS inclusion? I think we talked about maybe putting the MPS?
There is a component of NPS that measures that.
Feeling safe, okay.
Yeah.
So that would be our, that would be our KPI for that one.
That would be our KPI. Um, that is something to think about, though, as we go into next year's strategic planning process. How will we measure these things? Is this a priority? Well, how should we address the priorities so that it's measurable with the KPI?
Yeah, because when I think of KPI, I think of a, a number, a goal.
Yeah.
When I think of a task, I think binary, done or not done, on time or not, like a project activity.
Right.
And we struggled a lot, I think we told you when we brought you on board with the KPIs, and we really want those because it's important for your evaluation as well. So that leads me to my second question, which is, these are four years, right?
Mm-hmm.
So what are we doing this year? What are you, I guess, you don't have to answer this right now, I don't expect you to answer right now. But I would like to see, I don't know how my colleagues feel about, what of those four-year goals you're going to get done this year? So then when we do your eval, it's very clear, um, how that's going to play out.
Right, and that's kind of the time-sensitive aspect of it, that we're going to assign a time period, uh, for completion. And then if you take the strategy and maybe you have ten actions under that strategy and five of them have numbers that you can assign to it, those will be your KPIs for that strategy.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Just curious if the, um, the software you talked about, is this a new software we're purchasing to manage all this?
Mm-hmm, yes.
You have a ballpark of that licensing amount?
So we're looking at, well, we're, we're working with, uh, possibly Monday or Asana. Um, and they're about, depending on how many seats you have, eight or nine thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the project manager will do other tasks beyond this, right? They've got a other role of managing, okay, great.
So we were looking at her, um, assignments, and she has a lot of different things that she's going to be working on. But then we had the idea of utilizing this kind of process for the strategic plan as well, in addition to all the other things she's working on.
Okay, great, thank you.
One of the premises of, I was going to bring this up, one of the premises of the project manager position was to manage all the big projects that we have coming on, like the plunge, the parks and recs, and making sure that those projects are moving forward and on task and that, and even just helping with IT initiatives of any, any project to make sure that if, at any time we can get an update on what the status of those big projects are. That's-
Absolutely.
That's really the-
That's her priority.
That's her priority.
Mm-hmm.
And so what, what, to, um, Mr. Baldino's point is whatever software we buy, we can make sure that we use that across all, all of the projects?
Yes.
So we're all speaking the same language, we're all using the same structure and-
Absolutely, yes. All right, thank you.
All right, we need a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-three update to the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six strategic plan. So moved, like, do we have a second?
First, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, thank you. Item nine, twenty twenty-three to twenty-five communications plan for the city of El Segundo, Diane Chabon to present.
Thank you. Hello again, Mayor and city council. As I'm sure all of you know, I'm Diane Chabon, the communications manager for the city, and I'm excited to make my first presentation to you guys at city council about the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five communications plan. So why is communications important to the city? It strengthens relationships, builds trusts, and allows people to make informed decisions. So for a little background, the city's first communications plan was created pretty recently in May of twenty nineteen after the city and city council identified a comprehensive program was needed to establish communication standards, meet news and media needs, implement branding, provide proactive content, utilize and manage social media, and support for other marketing-related needs. And the plan was last updated in twenty twenty-one. So our goals for this communications plan is to inform and engage our stakeholders, strengthening the connection of the city with its residents, businesses, and community as a whole. We want the city's channels to be the number-one reliable source for information for all things city-related. And when we were developing this plan, we ensured it aligned with the city's five strategic goals, which we've just gone in depth with, with our deputy city manager, and ensured it, um, and you'll notice the first goal is enhancing communications. But the communications plan actually aligns with all five of those goals, even though the first one specifically mentions communications. We also implemented feedback from city department directors and team members about how the communications program has supported department efforts so far and identified areas of opportunity to improve moving forward. So who implements the communications plan? Uh, our deputy city manager, Barbara Voss, myself, our ES media team, our consultant, Kristin Berger Van of KMB Consulting, the communications committee, which is currently comprised of at least one representative from each department totaling about twenty members. Also, there was a large overlap between economic development and communications and reaching our target audiences and communicating to our business stakeholders, and Christina Ravelas does a really excellent job of partnering on those efforts. So our mission is to support the city through communications that foster effective, proactive, and two-way engagement with all stakeholders, leading to improved trust, greater transparency and understanding with residents, city employees, and businesses. Our north star for our communications are to be timely, proactive, transparent, accurate, effective, and helpful. And one of the golden rules of communications is to remember your audience. So here is a helpful infographic that shows all of our audiences and how we reach them. You'll see that it's kind of split in between external and internal communications. Uh, internal would be city employees, council, CCBs, and employee association leadership. External is everybody else, residents, businesses, employees, visitors, targeted external audiences. And as a follow-up to remember your audience, you have to meet your audience where they are. So here are our communications tools. We have our ES media team, which creates cable and digital YouTube content and programming. Email, we have direct email bulletins via the GovDelivery platform. City websites, both internal and external. Uh, our social media channels, which we currently have seventeen accounts across Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and LinkedIn. Also, media relations to help get our story out to a larger audience and add that third-party credibility. Fresh and professional design and photography to engage our audience, events, city signage, and print flyers. So now that we've identified who we want to reach and how we want to reach them, what do we want to accomplish? We have ten initiatives that are aligned with the city's strategic plan that serve as a roadmap to achieving our goals. Our first initiative is to support city council priorities. One of the ways we do that is by provide, providing active, proactive messaging to ensure transparency and public awareness about city-related matters. One of the ways we do that is by live streaming these meetings for accessibility, uh, which is available on our media, ES media cable and YouTube channels. We do a city council recap every Wednesday, that is a five-minute or less summary of everything that happens in every meeting in case you can't watch the full meeting. And we have project-based outreach that is recurring, such as the Hyperion updates that we do every city council week. Next, number two is to proactively reach out to the community and garner customer feedback. One of the ways we regularly reach out is through our monthly city news program and our newsletter. And a new goal for this year is to print the newsletter and have it available in city facilities to reach those who prefer printed materials as opposed to digital. We'll still do digital, but we're going to add this component to the outreach. We'll continue to analyze engagement reports on all of our channels to see what is resonating and what needs to be tweaked. Uh, we'll continue utilizing Qualtrics, which is a system to, that we use to conduct surveys, such as the annual net promoter survey. It's also used by individual departments for their own surveys, like currently we have a residential parking survey through community development that's being operated through Qualtrics. We'll also then, as Barbara mentioned, share with the community how the results of these surveys directly influence the city's strategic plan and how they're being implemented. Number three is to improve internal city communications. As was mentioned before, we are maximizing our use of the internet to be a one-stop shop for all of our city staff, to have all the resources they need and keep up to date in all of our projects and activities. In addition to that, we're hosting quarterly in-person town hall meetings with the city manager to provide updates in all the many initiatives and projects throughout the city and hear back from different city staff about different things they, questions they may have, different suggestions they may have, uh, and to interact with each other. Sometimes you get busy in your own department and you're not aware of all the other things happening. Number four, build stakeholder relationships with communications teams within the federal, state, and local elected officials' offices, within business community and within local community groups. Number five, maintain and enhance a consistent brand identity. A new thing that we are working on over this next year is with our consultant, Kristin Berger Van, to develop a comprehensive branding style guide for the city, which will unify our brand across all of our platforms. We currently have style guides for all of our websites, and this would standardize things outside of the websites, like, uh, letterhead to use, flyer and print font, logo placement, tone, all kinds of things that are not on our website currently. Within that style guide, we'll also outline an itemized vetting process within each department for approval of public-facing items. And we will be returning to city council with that style guide at a future date. Number six, lead emergency and crisis communications. We already have a very strong crisis communications plan. I bought it, brought it to a FEMA public information officer training, and the, the leaders there were very impressed and kind of used it as an example for other cities, so kudos to us. Uh, we'll continue to work with the new emergency management coordinator to review and refresh that plan as needed and schedule emergency response drills, just like we're going to do a great shakeout drill scheduled later this month through the fire department. Uh, number seven, increase engagement on social media platforms. Everyone's on social media, it's essential for us to get our communications out. We're going to use the engagement data to inform the city's social media strategy and participate in training to keep up to date with the best practices and features. Number eight, maximize the impact of El Segundo media. We're very lucky to have our own media team that broadcasts on YouTube and Spectrum Channel Three and Twenty-Two and AT&amp;T U verse ninety-nine. We're going to continue sex, successful programming channels and repurposing all of that content across our digital channels. We're going to utilize the team to support and promote department initiatives through video content creation, graphic design, and photography. And they also play a large role in creating economic development video assets. Number nine, strengthen media relations. Uh, the best media relationships are where you can help each other achieve your goals. They need a story to tell, we have a story to share. So we'll continue to be a reliable and timely source for our media contacts and regularly check in with reporters to align with their needs. And number ten, maintain the city websites. We're constantly updating and auditing our sites to make sure they have the most current and up-to-date information and continue to grow that reputation for being the go-to source for all city-related information. Now, as we were discussing earlier, how are we going to measure our success? Through community feedback and analytics, such as community understanding of high-priority initiatives leading to intended outcomes. That would be using our new online permitting system or attending public meetings, things like that. Metrics from our GovDelivery email platform, our website, social media channels, tracking views, followers, open and click rates, and engagement to measure our reach. Surveys, we want increased participation in our net promoter survey, and then we'll use the feedback results of online department and point-of-service surveys and implement the feedback. We'll use feedback from city staff about what's working for them and what's, can be improved upon. And then our positive earned media coverage supporting city messaging. We subscribe to a software called TVI's that tracks our media hits, audience reach, and publicity value. So for example, over the past month, a little longer, during El Segundo Little League's run and ultimate win of the twenty twenty-three Little League World Series, the city conservatively received over ten million dollars in publicity value for coverage from all of that. This is showcasing our incredible beach community and of course, our star athletes. So I also want to share a few key metrics to show the impact and growth of the city's communications plan. Our monthly page views of the city website has increased by seventy-nine percent since twenty twenty. As you can see, we used to have about fifty-seven thousand clicks per month, now we have almost double at a hundred and three thousand. Our email subscribers has increased by forty-one percent since twenty twenty. We had eighteen thousand in twenty twenty, now we have over twenty-five thousand. That's more subscribers than we have residents in El Segundo, so I think that's a really great number. And the engagement rate on those emails is just short of seventy percent. So that means seventy percent of the people that receive our emails are opening and/or clicking through to something in the email. Um, our community is very active on Facebook, so I want to show some exciting stats from that platform. By industry standards for government Facebook accounts, we are well above the curve when it comes to engagement. So engagement rate on Fa- on Facebook is the percentage of people who saw a post and liked, commented, shared, or clicked, or engaged with the, the post in any way. The average engagement for posts on Facebook government accounts is one-point-six percent. And all of our Facebook accounts have a post engagement rate of more than double that. And unsurprisingly, the engagement rates, rates align with the priorities from the net promoter survey. Public safety is one of the most important things to our community members, highest engagement rate is on fire and police. Um, second to that, rec and parks, programming and facilities, it's a close second at around six percent. City activities, and so on and so forth. Um, I know the percentages are low, but comparing to our industry, that's a great engagement rate overall. Some areas I think we can improve on is having better two-way engagement across our stakeholders and also our community members. And I think we can also lift our followers, although our police and fire following is very high already. So overall, we hope to continue this trend of growth and engagement and improve upon what we're already doing. And thank you all very much, happy to answer any questions.
That was great. Any questions?
Um, no, I just want to point out that when Carol and I started the ad hoc, we brought Diane in because one of the big things was how do we get the information out? And, uh, you have been tremendous in synthesizing the information and delivering concise messages. So we appreciate the help you've been doing with the Hyperion messaging.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I also want to give a compliment to both you, Diane, and Barbara and the team. You know, when I first got on council, this was something I really wanted to institute a communications department, and you guys have taken it and run with it and done an amazing job. The fact that this is now articulated and, you know, we have established clear understanding of how the communication flow happens and what are our goals and what we're trying to accomplish, we're just really pleased and it really, everything we've talked about, you've encapsulated into this, and I'm just really, really pleased. My one question, when it comes to surveys, one of the things I hear sometimes is, you know, who's pushing out that survey? I see a survey. Is there some way when we do a survey, especially when other department, like all the departments, if there's some type of official seal or something on it to say that this is a survey that's being pushed out by the city and not some other entity? Just that would be my only comment. How do we? And I'm not sure, I'm sure they could replicate that seal as well, but if somehow we could try to create some type of formal to say this is a survey produced by the city of El Segundo.
Yeah, any survey that we send out through our Qualtrics platform, and we're encouraging all surveys from the city to come from that platform, will have the city logo.
Yeah.
The city seal. And so if you see something that doesn't have the city seal, it's not one of ours.
Yeah, but just a lot of things can say El Segundo on them.
I know.
And kind of confuse it. So if there's some, you know, like in a political ad where it's this is paid for by the city of El Segundo or something, so people understand it's not.
Like the checkmark.
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly. Well, yeah, more or less a watermark. Right, so because there's a lot of, a lot of people in town who survey things.
Yeah. You can take a look at that, too.
A few items, it's worth, we do such, we've come so far in advancing communication out to the community, and sometimes I think we move one item to the next. So one thing I think is worth refreshing to people is report it.
Yes.
Like every now and then, periodically remind people that that exists. I know it makes public works life a lot easier because they can see things to address, and then you don't have to depend on whoever yelled at us most recently to tell you that there's a pothole somewhere or an illegal car rental or whatever the case may be. So I think that's an important and important survey or system we have here that we can refresh. Also, something on the internal communications, if we are succeeding in establishing points of contact with other elected bodies, so when we hear something that's about environment and we say, who do I contact at Ted Lou's office about environment? Who's a staffer for that? If you all know that, like, oh, talk to person X or person Y at Supervisor. You know, this is who does it for District Four, this is who does it for District Two. Those are the kinds of things that would make probably Daryl's life a lot easier, so we wouldn't ask him and play, you know, final jeopardy on the who's who of staffers and the city councils. And then lastly, on the El Segundo business site, I think it's worth us culling media or working with them to advance media on our media contacts about successes that we have in the business community. So if there's things out there, we have businesses that are succeeding all the time and doing interesting things, and oftentimes it's businesses we've never heard of that are signing, you know, hundred-million-dollar deals with the DoD or something. It's worth us garnering what we can to encourage people that, hey, there are places that may be having issues filling their seats for businesses, but we are not. So I don't know if that's coordination with the chamber or just a series of Google alerts on the computer being, oh, there's a company based in El Segundo that did this. We had some company that just signed a part of a $700 million DoD deal last week, somebody I'd never heard of. So it's worth using that to sort of sow the seeds of success here. Thanks.
Thank you. So a couple of things in response to that is, one of the appendices to our communications plan is the key stakeholders.
Yeah.
So we're always trying to, and I know Diane's been making a lot of contacts, we're always trying to find that right person at each of the key.
Elected offices.
Elected offices. It could be NRG, it could be Scattergood, it could be, it just depends on what the type of communication is, but we are working on a database for that. And then as far as economic development, we put things out on LinkedIn and things, but we could enhance that, maybe do some media alerts or do some enhanced outreach regarding positive stories, maybe put a banner on our website.
There probably just will never be a time when we will have this many people in local media on our Rolodex.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Just, thank you very much. Great presentation. You know, I'm a sucker for a good presentation. So I will say that the level of the reporting coming from staff over the past few years has really come up, and I really appreciate the work that goes into it. I used to have a rule, it was like, if you cannot get it done in ten slides, don't get it done. You got twenty-eight, and it worked out really well, so I stand corrected on my ten-slide minimum or maximum. So I really appreciate all the work that's been done. You know, one of the things we talked about, I think, during the strategic planning sessions was, we really felt like, we need to get some PR in here. We're not doing enough PR. We're not, we're not shouting out the things that we're doing here. Apparently we don't, because you're taking care of it. And that's, the way I looked at it was, this, I think, is exactly what we had in mind about the communication aspect, letting people know what we're actually doing in this town and doing it on a big enough platform to, for people to notice it. So, great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Little League has been a really great partner, I have to say.
They have definitely helped our click rate, for sure.
Yes.
A couple of quick things. The one MPS question that we score poorly on consistently relates to city council vision and listening. Let's include that as a metric in the communication plan, because if we're communicating effectively, that score will go up. So I would like to see that as a measure of success for communications.
Okay.
You guys know the one I'm talking about.
Yep.
The other thing is, just a question, does police and fire still have separate PIOs or are you running point on communications?
They have their own PIOs.
Do we foresee that changing? What, is there a reason that we are still, what's the method, what's the rationale for that? Anyone?
I haven't heard of any plans to change the number of PIOs. I don't know if you've.
No, while they have their own PIOs, we are working to funnel all of this information through Diane. All, anything that comes out of the city, any department, print or media, should be going through her.
Yeah, it would be nice to have a coordinated.
Yes.
Effort, programmatically, too, you know?
Absolutely.
So there aren't conflicts, things like that. Okay.
Yes, it's also important to ensure, especially when we establish the style guide and the policies about what we, the messaging, the type of message you want to push out, that if, that everything that comes from the city adheres to those policies. That's why we've requested everything to go through this department, even if it's just a cursory pass-through, but everything needs to be vetted. Otherwise, you know, we could, someone could post something that is, is counterproductive to what one of our goals is.
So just so I'm clear, going forward, you're the gatekeeper of all things communication for the city.
Yes.
Great.
Fire and police still need their own PIO officers for public safety reasons, and if an incident occurs.
Yeah, like immediate things on the site.
Yeah, it's appropriate for them to have their own public information officers, but in terms of communications outreach, that isn't like a major emergency of some kind? Yes.
Great. Well, great, great job, Barbara, Diane, it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to approve this. Do we have any other comments, questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. That was the quickest, oh, Chris was a second. That was the quickest we've ever gotten through communications plan discussion, so.
Well communicated.
As our colleague said, yeah, well communicated. Good job, told a good story.
I was just reminding Drew, is when we first got on council, you know, the website was pretty, pretty challenging, had a lot of opportunities, and we put a lot of time into bringing on the new website and establishing this centralized communication. I think it really has come, you've really taken it to the next level, and I'm just really appreciative that we were able to implement it.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item ten, amendment to the city contributions for CalPERS medical premium. Excuse me, Rebecca Reddick to present.
Mayor, members of the council, this item tonight is related to negotiated increases that we have for three different successor contracts that were approved this year, the Police Officers Association, the Police Support Services Employees Association, and the Supervisory and Professional Employees Association. All three of those labor contracts included an increase by $50 to the total health insurance contribution effective January first, 2024. Because the health insurance contribution falls under PIMCA for CalPERS Health, we are required to approve a resolution. CalPERS requires at least two months to process these resolutions, so that's why I'm bringing them to you in October for effective date of January first. The other piece that's in this staff report is, under the Affordable Care Act, each year you are required to do a calculation to figure out the affordability of what your health insurance plans are and what your agency contributes. So the minimal essential coverage amount for 2024 for the city of El Segundo under the CalPERS plans for Region Three is $5.28. We are still in our measurement period, so employees who work on average of thirty hours per week or fifteen-hundred-and-sixty hours during the measurement period of November first to October thirty-first would qualify. Last year, we anticipated four qualifying. We actually didn't have any. Again, we're not yet to the end of the measurement period, but we are anticipating potentially four people could qualify again this year. So that also falls under PIMCA and requires a CalPERS resolution. So with the staff report tonight, there are four resolutions for you.
Great, thank you. Before we have the city attorney read them, are there any questions? Okay, we got to read these one by one for each bargaining unit, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the council, we have a resolution fixing the employer contribution under the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act at an equal amount for employees and annuities with respect to a recognized employee organization 002, El Segundo Police Officers Association. This resolution is available for vote.
I'll move approval. Pimentel, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero. The mayor. You will.
Before the council, we have a resolution fixing the employer contribution under the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act at an equal amount for employees and annuities with respect to a recognized employee organization 008, El Segundo Police Support Services Employees Association. Resolution is available for a vote.
Boyle's moves approval.
Perfect, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Somebody's got to go. Five, zero. Okay, next one, please.
Resolution fixing the employer contribution under the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act at an equal amount for employees and annuities with respect to a recognized employee organization 005, El Segundo Supervisory and Professional Employees Association. Resolution is available for a vote.
Boyle's moves approval. Second. Drew? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
And Mr. Mayor, it's worth noting, those three, those include annuities, right? That is a notable thing. There is, there are very few cities that do lifetime medical in this manner.
Good point. Thanks for clarifying. All right, last but not least.
Finally, we have a resolution fixing the employer contribution under the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act at an equal amount for employees with respect to 009, Unrepresented Hourly Employee Group. Resolution is available for a vote.
Boyle's moves approval.
Truvu, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, city clerk, any reports this evening?
Lots. No, I'm teasing. Nothing.
Nothing, thank you, Madam Clerk. City treasurer is not here. Councilor Baldino.
Yeah, I want to thank Mesia Jennings. I've been emailing Ryan Jackson at the mayor's office. I don't think he would have responded but for Mesia saying, "How is four o'clock tomorrow on your calendar?" And boom, he responded. We set up the Zoom call, so thank you for the persistence there. And then a quick happy birthday to my son, who is eighteen, and my mom, whose age I will not state.
Nice. Happy birthday, James or Vinnie? James, that's right, eighteen, thank you. All right, Councilor Drew.
I got a couple of things. I went to my first COG meeting. Interesting. There was some interesting things, stuff there, though. They did celebrate their twentieth anniversary of the South Bay Environmental Services Center, which is, that took about an hour. And a lot of good things that came out of that, though, that they've done from, from, you know, catch basins and rain barrels and fifteen-million kilowatt-hours electricity, you know, enough to power thirteen-hundred-and-eight homes per year. There was just a lot of things that they celebrated over that, and it's a continuing process, so that was a big piece of it. A couple of the interesting ones were, there are two assembly bills that are going through that the COG reversed course on. And the reason why they reversed course on them, the first one is Assembly Bill 531, which authorizes $4.86 billion in bonds for construction of rehabilitation treatment residential care settings, housing of veterans, and others experienced or at risk of homelessness and living with a behavioral health challenge. The problem was that at the last minute, there was an amendment to allow by right approvals outside of residential zones. So basically, there's been no limit on the number of residents living in these facilities at any given time, and the COG felt that that was taking away local control. So they reversed course on that. And the second one was Assembly Bill 25, and that's abandon the local authority from prohibiting the operation of bicycles on sidewalks adjacent to a highway corridor that doesn't have a bikeway. It removes bicycle speed limits previously set at ten miles an hour. So what happened was, again, they were supporting that, and then they put an amendment in saying that they wanted to take out the ten-mile-an-hour speed limit, which basically means you can fire electric bikes down your sidewalks all the time. So that was two things of note that were the discussed, and of course, we talked about the local travel network on Thursday, November second at 3:00 PM. So that's another one to get kind of the word out for. So that was, that was a big one there. And the second thing I have is, I'd like to, you know, for a future agenda, hopefully the next one, Congressman Ted Lou has what's called the Youth Advisory Council, and what that is, is out of his district. You have to apply for it, go through interviews, everything, and they get about a hundred-and-twenty-five, a hundred-and-fifty applicants per year, and they choose twenty-five of them. And that group of students meets once a month, and basically each month, there is a set of bills that he has them go through and to discuss it and make a recommendation as to whether to support it or not. I think that would be a version of that on a local level for us, trying to getting an El Segundo Youth Advisory Council forum to kind of do the same type of thing. I know we had talked about at one point, trying to put a student on each council, on each CCB, and maybe this is a way to kind of encompass the whole thing and just kind of make it a new, new opportunity for the youth to get involved. So I'd like to try to put that on the next agenda to discuss basically how we can do it. I know we actually met with some representatives from Ted Lou's office to kind of give us a pathway on how to do it, and I think Barbie will be able to shed a little bit more light in that in the next meeting if we can do that. And that's all I got.
Great, thank you. Councilor Prustak.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. I would like to thank the Public Works for taking care of the graffiti that was, happened over the weekend on a very quickly. You did it very quickly, so thank you very much. And I just want to remind everybody, you know, I know putting on Facebook is great, but it's real important that you actually use the fix-it button. I mean, I just happened to catch it quickly and was able to quickly contact the Public Works Director, but it's real important that if you, if we don't have a record of it, we can't take care of it, and Facebook is not necessarily a record-keeping place, so just remember to always post, if you're going to post it, that's fine, but also make sure you notify us officially either through the fix-it button or to contact Public Works Director or the Police Department directly. And then I just want to let everyone know, remind everybody that this weekend is coronation, so there's going to be a lot of kids out there taking pictures, and next week will be the float building and the homecoming parade. So it's a great way for the community to come together and celebrate our schools, and that's it.
Thank you. So that report-it function that we've heard mentioned twice, where, can you just search that on the website? Can't remember where that's at. It's at the beginning?
It's on the homepage.
Homepage?
Mm-hmm.
All right, and then the beauty of it is that people hear back if they leave their contact information, right? Okay.
Not just that, when you, you can drop a pin on the map of where your problem is, and then anytime you come back, those pins live on the site, so you can hover over that and it will tell you the last time someone looked at it, what the progress is, and when it's been completed. it's been completed. It's a really, it's a really good application.
Do we have numbers on, that would be interesting to have a KPI on that. How many people actually use that? And how we get that out there? Because I know I'm not even using it yet. I just email you and Daryl and say, someone dumped on this corner again.
We did ask for that KPI at our last strategic planning meeting. I knew I did.
I think I radically distort. I distort your numerator and denominator on that.
I'm sure you do. Okay, Mayor Proton, Pimontal.
A few things, Mr. Mayor. We did not have a quorum at sanitation, but importantly, for people in county sanitation, which is our properties east of PCH, there is litigation, a second piece of litigation that will settle, and I'm not telling any stories out of school here, but about some sewage spills that happened in Carson for which sanitation is liable, and it's, they accept liability. The settlement amounts will be put into rehabilitation efforts on local sewage lines, but there's, it's a lot of sewage, it's 4 million people that they're serving with those lines, and they run everything from Silmar all the way down to Carson. But that is, that, you know, that, those are people's sewage fees that are being paid by our businesses east of PCH. So it's a significant amount of money, it's a seven-figure number that will go to that settlement, but it's not going to a, it's not a punitive damage, it's a rehabilitative damage, but still a significant amount of money that will come out of their fees. Metro Scene Line, Metro has kicked that down the, into the future a bit on when they will make a decision on what route or if the line will be built at all. That will go from Redondo from the Marine Stop all the way down to the Torrance Transit Center. So we expect to have that decision made in either January or February 2024. But within our region at the COG, as Councilmember Drew doubtless got an earful, that is a very contentious piece between a number of constituencies to our south about the routing and the manner of the routing. And for your tax dollars at work, I mean, that's over a two, two and a half, right now, in our current dollars, it's $2.5 billion. And this thing is projected to be built about 2035, 2036. So by then, if you think pools are expensive, imagine the trains. Speaking of pools, a point of reference, there's an aquatic center being built in Gardena. So if we perhaps could, could be bouncing ideas off them and getting reference checks about if, if we're both seeing the same numbers on pool building costs. Theirs is not a municipal plunge like ours. Theirs is more similar in design to the aquatic center, but you know, that is more, Gardena is booming. So I think that would be a good reference piece for us. And then of notable on the public safety end, the legislation on care courts is advancing, and care courts, that is about people with mental incapacity, living in homelessness, probably address 7,000 to 10,000 people throughout the whole state, so it's not, you know, it's not an overnight solution, but rather than 72-hour holds for people who are gravely incapacitated, the concept would be they could see a specialized court that could make a determination on the nature of conservatorship that they might warrant. So that's something that's been heavily sponsored by LA County in partnership, San Diego County's being on it, Orange County, Yolo County have sort of pushed this through, and that could have, you know, 7,000 to 10,000 people is a lot of people, but the knock-on effects of that in success, you could see some of the mentally challenged people who are living in homelessness could be greatly impacted by that. So that's something to keep an eye on as we look at how people move around the community. Other than that, there's a lot of talk about aging in place, but we can save that for the next time the Age in Place Task Force meets. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Nothing for me this evening. City Attorney Joaquin.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. City manager.
I also don't have anything this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Oh, hometown fair. Any, any first-hand observations?
I thought the Kiwanis did an excellent job on the beer garden. So thanks to anyone who was involved with that, whether or not I'm married to you, fantastic work. But I do know that the city maintenance staff is up at the crack of dawn getting that set up, so thank you to our staff and our city employees for everything you do, so we can have these great events, where we can get together, and I just appreciate the hard work. So thank you.
Yeah, I know Barry Griffin was very active in that one for the last several years, too, so great job to everybody.
Mayor, I have one announcement.
Yes, please.